Good evening. I want to welcome you to the July 11th Planning Commission meeting. The first thing on our agenda would be to do the invocation and the pledge, would you please join me? And Neil Boatright will lead us.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we pray to you today for your grace and your forgiveness in our shortcomings. We ask that you give us knowledge and compassion to make good decisions for our community. We thank you, Lord, for all the blessings that you've provided for Glen County and its citizens. Jesus, we pray to you because you are the great I am and you alone can make all things happen. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to review the meeting procedures with all of you. The planning staff presents the application request to the Planning Commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposed conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied in zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their requests to the Planning Commission. It is the responsibility of applicant to make presentation on results, on request, and to address any condition or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings. Public comments on public hearing items will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Site plans, public comments on site plans will be limited to 15 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of three minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your... We've lost the end of it. We've lost the end of it. Anyway, we're asking you to allow your spokesperson to present and, you know, and to stay on subject, and there should be no attacking anyone. And if any of that, if it's not handled properly, then I would ask you to terminate your conversation. And I apologize because I don't have it all written down for me today. The next item on our agenda is some Planning Commission announcements. So the first announcement I have is that Commissioner Bill Edgley is out of the county on business, and he will be joining us online. We'll be able to see him, and he'll be able to vote and ask questions. And then we have two commissioners that will need to recuse themselves. That would be at certain times. So, Kevin?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm involved as architect in 3.2 SB 5479, so I will need to recuse myself.
Okay. And Commissioner Boatright?
All right, Madam Chair, Lady, which...
Which one are you? It is...
I've got SP 5494.
Madam Chair, I'm going to have to recuse myself from SP 5494.
Okay, all right. I have one other announcement to make, and then I will see if the county has any Planning Commission announcements. But in the public hearing, we have ZM 5449 shown as the first item on our agenda. That has been moved to the last item on our agenda. So we will start with ZM 5486. And Commissioners, I mean, this Planning Staff, do you have any notices, anything you want to talk about? Okay. The next item on our agenda is approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on June 6, 2023, subject to any necessary changes or corrections. Commissioners?
Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion second? All in favor? All right, they are approved. Okay, the first item on our agenda is ZM 5486, and... Mr. Chris is coming to present that. It is a rezoned consideration of an application to rezone a portion of parcel 0200867 from Forest Agriculture Zoning District to the Freeway Commercial Zoning District.
Good evening. Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you tonight, we have a rezoning for a parcel along Fancy Bluff and Highway 95. This is a Commissioner-sponsored rezoning. Prior application, ZM 5334 was denied by the Board of Commissioners on January 19th of this year. This rezoning is a rezoning of two acres from Forest Agriculture to Freeway Commercial. The parcel is split zone, and there is currently no access to the property, and there would need to be access before a building permit can be issued. Here's the site. As you see, it is split zones. Here's the survey. And here are your possible actions. That is all from staff.
All right. Do we have someone that wants to... Well, first, let me see if anyone wants to ask you any questions.
Mr. Carey, I do have a question. I guess this is a procedural question. It was always my understanding, if this board or the county commission turns anything down, denies it, it would be a year before it could come back up. Is there an exception been made here?
Yeah, so if the applicant, the prior applicant, was to bring this forward, then it would be a year. But if the county commission decides they want to bring this up, then they could do so at any time.
Okay. I have a question, and it was denied, but I guess I'm wondering, why is it bringing back? Is it the access issue? The rezoning is going to take care of that? I'm just wondering if they denied it before we're putting it up now.
I'll let Stephanie answer that.
Yeah, thank you for that question. My understanding, Commissioner Tossenson is sponsoring this request. As Mr. Carey stated, the applicant would have had to wait for a year, so this allows it to go forward more quickly. I'm not aware of the specifics for that. I know the county attorney's office has had some discussions about this. I don't know if Mr. Gulli wants to add anything to that.
Excuse me. Just to clarify, as Mr. Carey mentioned, county ordinance specifies a time of a year for an applicant to reapply. State law refers to a six-month period, so there is a six-month waiting period, and that six months has elapsed or will elapse by the time this comes up to the Board of Commissioners, July 20th. So Commissioner Tossenson expressed a desire to revisit the vote. And procedurally, in a zoning matter, you can't redo a vote after the meeting. So essentially, the fastest way to do it was for him to sponsor the application.
Ms. Leaf, what has changed? What, I mean, exactly what is the difference now than it was before? That's, I'm just trying to figure this out.
Sure. To my knowledge, nothing has changed. I mean, some of the issues that have been brought up before were the access, and there was no access currently. And to my understanding, there hasn't been access secured yet through the site. I believe the owner of the property is here this evening. If he's able to come up and add to that, perhaps there has been a change. And I know the initial request, there was an interest in having billboards on the site. Staff has researched that further. This is in a blockout zone for GDOT. And in talking with GDOT staff at the state, there doesn't appear that there would be the ability to put a billboard on the property, but this request would allow the entire parcel to be freeway commercial instead of split zoning. So if they are able to get the access, they would have more ability to develop the site.
Okay, and just a thought, I mean, I don't know that it could ever happen, but you know, there's a lot of controversy about the railroad track. They're stopping people for hours at the time. That's on the other end of Fancy Bluff Road. If the county could figure out a way to get access through that, that would be a great thing, if that could happen. I mean, I don't know legally how that could happen, but it's a thought. It's something to think about.
Yeah, we have looked at that particular issue, some other subdivisions in that area. I don't know if any staff has looked at that in this location, so that's something we could take a look at, if that's a possibility to do.
But that doesn't apply to what we're here to discuss today?
No.
Yeah, I think it's a good planning idea as we're looking at changes to try to accomplish emergency access routes, but, you know.
I have a... Ooh, that's a lot louder than almost. A question. So when this body approved it last time and it moved forward to the county commission, we put some conditions on it. Do you by chance have a copy of those? So I think the big one was that they had to get access from the front of the parcel to actually use it for any freeway commercial uses besides a billboard.
Yes, that was correct.
Okay, that's what I recalled, but... And I know at the time, the applicant agreed to that, at least verbally, that they didn't have an issue with that. So I guess we can bring that up again, because that was one of the concerns.
And one more question. If we did, and listen, I want people to do what they want to with their property. I have a track, and I'm not by any means pushing away from this applicant. But we've had other applicants up here that's got turned down for billboards. Are they going to have the same opportunity to bring it back to the commission in a timely manner?
So I think it will depend on, you know, where they are in the process. If they were denied by the Board of Commissioners, you know, as we talked about, they would have to wait a year unless there was a commissioner that was interested in sponsoring the rezone to bring it forward, you know, earlier than that year waiting period. I know in one of the billboard applications in the Blythe Island area, there were two that were near each other. One was denied. The other one, the applicant had requested to table it to talk with their attorney and look at some more issues. So that actually is still an application in our office. It has not, they have not requested to go back to the Board of Commissioners. So there's one application that you might be referring to that could still go back to the Board of Commissioners as soon as the applicant requests to have that placed on an agenda noticed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Would the applicant like to come forward?
Phil Munson, he's the owner of the property. Obviously, the applicant is Sammy Tossenson, who is not here tonight, I don't believe. I'm Britt Smith. I'm Mr. Munson's attorney. Unfortunately, the last two times he came between y'all and the commission, he didn't bring his attorney. And so that's kind of why we're here right now, is because the last commission, at the commission meeting, it was denied for this access issue, which y'all brought up. And I explained to the commission after the fact was, we put, they were trying to say, well, you're doing this before you have access. We looked at it, let's get it zoned the way we wanted it zoned, and then we'll figure out the access. We can't do anything, you can't do anything without it being zoned the way it wants to be zoned. If you can't get access, then it's immaterial what it's zoned for. But so we were looking at it, what's the proper steps to do it? They did the zoning first, went through y'all with the recommendation. Commissioner Tossenson was against it. Talked to him after the fact. I think it was some miscommunication at the meeting. I let Mr. Munson talk about that. There was some miscommunication at the Board of Commissioners meeting. After talking with him again, decided that, you know, we need to go back. They wanted, as Assistant County Attorney mentioned, they wanted to do a kind of a revote. They couldn't do a revote, so they ended up saying, let's wait six months, we'll bring it back here in front of y'all today. So that's where we are right now. And as Commissioner Boatright mentioned, you know, we're not opposed to the idea of having some access through there. You know, I've seen the articles in the newspaper. I'm aware of that issue over there on Fancy Bluff. And so obviously, you know, we don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but that is something that Mr. Munson is not opposing to. And as far as the billboard goes, it wasn't denied because of the billboard. It was denied solely because of the access. Billboard was just the reason why he was originally trying to ask for it to be rezoned, but it was the last... was the lack of access, which we're working on right now to get, is the reason why it was kind of denied from the commission. So, Mr. Munson, you have anything to add? Have any questions I can answer?
Yeah, so the question that last time we, this body approved it, was that there could be no highway, no freeway commercial usage if the access was from the rear of the property? Only a billboard could be done with that kind of, that being the exception, that the access for freeway commercial had to be from the, what I call the front, the Highway 17 side of the property? Are y'all still amicable to that?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're in discussions with Pilot, Pilot or Love?
Love's.
In discussion with Love's about trying to get some access across their property.
There was also a stipulation in there about mechanic shop and auto repair and that, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
No, I don't remember.
I got that confused with another location.
Yeah, I think so.
It's been happening a lot lately.
Just trying to get a general, if I'm saying it, freeway commercial.
Just freeway, because y'all saw it's split, split zone right now, so we're kind of, and, you know, county staff couldn't tell us what we can do with it right now because of the split zoning, so we got to get it one way or the other, and the freeway commercial makes the most sense for this.
Yes.
And as I recall, that split zoning happened when the interstate went through, right?
Yep. Somebody, they took a black Sharpie and drew a square, and that was what became freeway commercial.
Okay, great.
So, answer any other questions for commission?
Thank you.
All right. Thank y'all.
Okay, this is, excuse me, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come and speak against this? If so, please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission. Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to, to come and speak on behalf of this? If so, please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission. Okay, hearing none, seeing none. The public comment period is closed. Commissioners?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to recommend approval of ZM 5486 zoning decision as presented. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any questions?
So if we approve it...
So if we approve it as that, I guess this is probably a staff question. If they ended up getting access via the rear adjacent property, would they be able to have whatever they, freeway commercial allows, even if their access was from the rear of the parcel?
Yes, so if they got access from the rear, they would still be able to use freeway commercial. However, they would have to make those maneuvers with the property owner on that side.
Right.
But as far as your previous recommendation that you had, it was the owner gains legal access to the property from the freeway commercial side of the property, and no access to the residential side, through the residential side. So that was your previous recommendation.
Okay. That's the only way I'm comfortable, is if it's that way, but.
So we have a motion and a second. You wanting to add something?
Well, only if they wanted to amend their motion to add that the access to have freeway commercial development has to come from the highway, the freeway commercial adjacent properties, not come through the residential.
If I may, you will need to vote on the pending motion or have it withdrawn.
Okay.
Well, if they could work it out, though, through the residential with the, I mean, if they allowed it, I mean, would that be a...
You'd have, you could have a truck stop going through the residential.
Yeah, I see your point.
I would feel a lot more comfortable how we had it before, I think.
Yeah, all right. So, but we need to either vote this motion in or out first.
Or withdraw.
I'd like to modify my motion, if that's the proper procedure. Or do we have to rescind that?
To be safe, you may withdraw the motion and make a new one.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to withdraw my previous motion.
Okay.
And, and, let me see, recommend approval of proposed zoning decision with a modification of having the access through the commercial property from the south, and no access through the residential portion.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, I'll second, I'm sorry. I'll second. Two seconds.
We have a motion in two seconds. All in favor?
How about Bill?
It passes. Thank you.
Bill?
Bill, I'm sorry. Bill Edgy? Mr. Edgy?
I vote aye. Vote in favor.
He votes in favor. So now we're unanimous. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the next one, which is... Bible, what?
Bible Baptist.
Excuse me, what? Yeah. We got Bible Baptist Church coming before us, exception to height limits, and Ms. Leaf is here for the county.
Good evening. Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. So this is an exception to height limit. There is some code language in our zoning code that does allow the planning commission to, to issue these kind of modifications for a select number of types of requests. So this does not have to go to the Board of Appeals as a variance. So what they are proposing, this is a proposed addition of a steeple to Bible Baptist Church. Their proposed steeple is 98 feet, so it's, or 98 feet, one and a half inches above ground level. The maximum building height for the church, that is, maximum is 60 feet, and the church building is 58 feet, one and a half inches. And the FAA did issue a letter earlier this year that determined that the church steeple up to 115 feet above ground level does not create a hazard to air navigation. So that's a pretty big thing, given the location off of Harrieger's. So here is the proposed elevation. And these are the code standards that you would review to determine whether this would be, whether you'd want to issue this variance to the height limit. And these are your possible motions. And Chris Amos is here representing the applicant. Thank you.
Okay, anyone have any questions on Ms. Leaf?
Ms. Stephanie, this is one of the properties that we rezoned because it was not zoned properly. Is that?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Leaf? Mr. Amos, would you like to come forward?
So Chris Amos with CSCC. I'm sure that you remember us bringing this before you the last time. You know, one of the things that we did not have in hand was FAA approval of the steeple height, so we withdrew the request for the steeple until we could get through the FAA process, which we have. And so now, I'm here to answer any questions, and if you don't have any, to ask you to approve this as submitted.
Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Amos? Okay. Thank you. All right, this is a public comment period. If there is anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak against this project, please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on behalf of the Bible Baptist Church steeple? Please come forward and state your name and speak, and address the commission. Hearing none, seeing none. The public comment period is closed. Ms. Leaf?
Here are your motions this evening.
Commissioners, you have any questions on Ms. Leaf?
Nope.
All right.
If it was a billboard, I'd have a problem, but being a steeple, and the way I look at it, it really is 40 feet high, even though it's 98 feet above the ground, so, but saying that, Madam Chairman, I recommend approval of the height exception as presented.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions, Commissioners? How do you vote?
Thank you.
And Mr. Edgy?
Vote in favor of...
Would you say that again?
I vote in favor of the motion.
Thank you. So it is unanimous. Okay, the next item on our agenda is another public comment period. It's for SP 5479 Varsity Plaza Supply, and Mr. Chris is here again for the county.
Good evening. Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you tonight, we have a site expansion for Varsity Plaza. It's a 3,100 square foot expansion of an existing commercial business, and the existing business is located at 2320 and 2323 Sixth Street. Here is the site. Here is the site plan in the rear. The hashed area is where the new expansion is going to be, and below is an elevation towards the bottom. So it'll be mirroring what's already there. And here's a close-up of the site plan. And here are your possible motions. We do have Eddie Wildsmith to represent as well.
Any questions of Mr. Carey? Mr. Wildsmith, would you like to come forward and discuss, discuss your project?
Good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Mark Bruce, owner of Varsity Supply, has about tripled his, his business in the last, I don't know, six or eight years. I built him a warehouse in 2006, and he is needing to expand it substantially. So I'm not even sure this is big enough, but anyway, this is a start. So, yeah, I would surely appreciate this if we could get this done.
Any questions, Commissioners?
You gonna put a nice new warehouse behind an existing building where we can't see it?
Pretty much.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, he won't let me tear down his regular office to build another one, so, at least at this point.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public comment period. If there is anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak against this project, please come forward, state your name, and address the commission. If there is anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak on behalf of this project, please come forward, state your name, and address the commission. I know y'all are already tired of hearing me say that. Okay, hearing none, seeing none. The public comment period is closed. Commissioners?
Madam Chairlady, I'd like to move to approve SP 5494 as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, 5494 or 5479?
I'm, I'm sorry. I told y'all I was confused.
5479.
5479, as presented.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Mr. Edgy?
Vote in favor of the motion.
You approved? Okay, thank you. I'm not hearing you well. Thank you.
Sorry.
It's not your fault. Okay. Next one on our agenda is SP 5480, 850 Pinnacle Road, event venue site plan. Ms. Leaf is here for the county.
So this is SP 5480, and Commissioners, you may recall, a couple months ago, this project came before you for a recommendation for a special use permit for an event venue on Pinnacle Road. Their event venue special use permit did get approved by the Board of Commissioners last month, and so now they're before you with their site plan for their new 8,000 square foot event venue barn. They also have outdoor event areas shown on the site plan. There will be a catering kitchen, no commercial kitchen, and restrooms. They do have a parking area for 132 vehicles, and only 40 spaces are required. And this is the property off of Pinnacle. It is a large parcel, but it's only this front portion closer to Pinnacle that will be where the venue will, event venue will take place. There's also a single-family home on the property as well. And this is their site plan. They're coming in with this driveway off of Pinnacle that's new. They are showing a type E buffer along Pinnacle, their parking area. And then this is their event venue barn, and then the green areas surrounding are just kind of the outdoor areas, if someone were to bring in a tent, or there might be other festivities they have there. I just zoomed in. And this is their elevation. And these are your possible motions. And Kevin Stroud from Robert Civil Engineering is here representing the applicant tonight. Thank you.
Any questions on Ms. Leaf? Mr. Stroud, would you like to come forward?
Actually, Kevin could be here. I'm Wesley Franks, Robert Civil Engineering.
I didn't think you looked like Mr. Stroud.
I'm here to request approval of the site plan as presented. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Are those handicap spaces up by the venue?
They are.
Okay. How many, how many are there there?
About two.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. This is a public comment period, a public comment time, and is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak against this approval? Please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak on behalf of this project? Please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission. Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, a move to approve SP 5480 as presented.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is unanimous. Mr. Edgy?
I vote in favor of the motion.
Thank you. So it is unanimous. Okay, the next item on our agenda is SP 5481, 495 Canal Road Site Plan, and Ms. Leaf is here for the county.
Thank you. So this is a new 6,775 square foot, three-unit retail and restaurant commercial center at 495 Canal Road. And this is the property that's proposed. This is McDavid Way in this location. Just to familiarize, this is the Cheddar's Restaurant across McDavid Way, and so this is the canal crossing area. And this is the proposed three-unit. They would have, so this is Canal Road right here, and then there is a connector road that they're proposing, or I think it's under construction right now, behind here. that they're proposing, or I think it's under construction right now, behind here, and then McDavid Way is on the right of the screen. And this is a conceptual elevation similar to some of the other buildings that are out in Canal Crossing. And these are your possible motions. And Wesley Franks from Robert Civil Engineering is here representing the applicant. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions, Ms. Lee? Okay.
Wesley Franks again, Robert Civil. Here to answer any questions you may have and request approval of the site plan as presented.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Everybody wants to know what restaurants come to be there.
Well, I can say that they're highly desirable restaurants in our current Glen County, so...
Thank you.
Better not currently.
Not currently. Gonna be something new.
Like a Krispy Kreme?
There's Mr. Calloway on the back row.
Do what?
Is Mr. Calloway?
And he's only smiling. He's not gonna tell us.
He told us last time.
Again, Mr. Calloway, thank you for all you do for Glen County. Yes, sir, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Franks. Again, this is a public comment period. So, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak against this project on Canal Road? Please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak on behalf of this project? Please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission. Hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, a move, to approve SP 5481 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Mr. Edgy?
I vote in favor of the motion.
Thank you. It is unanimously approved. Okay, the next item on our agenda is 5484, Yancey Caterpillar Site Plan, and Mr. Carey is here for the county.
Good evening, Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you tonight, we have a site plan approval for the expansion of an existing commercial business, seventy-four thousand eight hundred square feet proposed. Here is the site. Again, it's five parcels over off of Perry Lane, at the corner of Perry Lane and Bailey Road. Here is the site. Would like to mention that the applicant will need a variance for their parking requirements as they have fifty-four parking spaces provided, and they are required to have eighty-three.
Eighty-three, you say?
Yes. Here is the site. And here are your possible motions. Staff does recommend approval with the condition that the site plan is not valid until the lots are combined with an expedited subdivision. There are, this site right here has three parcels, and the proposed building number two is on a property line, and the proposed building number one is on a property line as it currently is designed.
Any questions of Mr. Carey?
Yes, I got a couple of questions, Mr. Carey.
Yep.
Is this the old Gisco seafood property? Is it, this has to be next door to Yancey Caterpillar?
I'm, I'll let the, I'll let Wesley answer that.
Okay.
Any other questions of Mr. Carey? Okay. So, we will ask this gentleman, Mr. Franks, to come back.
Wesley Franks, Robert Civil Engineering. Just to kind of point out a couple of things that Chris mentioned with regard to the parking, I think that was kind of an error on our side. We do, or show fifty-four currently, I guess, shown spaces on there, but the site's really gonna be just pretty much all gravel minus the handicap spaces that we'll have up front. There'll have to be an improved surface. There is enough spaces to get the eighty-four that we need. I think that was an oversight on our end. You'll see along the front where we've kind of got them called out, but we do have areas in the rear of the property between the two buildings and through that access drive to add the extra twenty-nine spaces, so I'd like to point out that. I don't know what we need to do tonight to clarify that, but we will not need the variance for the extra twenty-nine spaces. Just want to point that out. We can, I guess, discuss that. In regard to Mr. Buckwright's question, I'm not familiar. If that was the old Gisco site, I do know that they own this property. It busts the corner of Bailey and Perry Lane right there, so I don't know if that answered the question. It's right across from Steel Fabrication.
That has to be the same property I'm talking about, and that was going, that was leading into the question about the parking. You would have enough parking space to make one hundred and fifty parking spaces there?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
And they do own the property across the street on Bailey, so if we need parking there, we'll be able to have it, so I think that was kind of an oversight on our end.
Okay.
But we do have plenty of spaces to get the parking required. And to answer the question with regard to the consolidation, chief surveying is currently working on that consolidation plat right now.
So, I'm not sure we can do this, but I think we can. If we had it approved tonight contingent on you providing a revised site plan reflecting the space for eighty-four spaces, that's not a problem on your end?
No, we'd be glad to do that. I don't know if that's something we provide to the staff after the fact.
Yeah, Stephanie's saying yes. We could make that motion that way. Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Franks? Okay, thank you. This is a public comment period, so if there is anyone in the audience who wants to speak in opposition to SP 5454 or 5484, my glasses are not working tonight, would you please come forward and state your name and address the commission? And is there anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak on behalf of this project? Please come forward, state your name, and address the commission. Hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed. Commissioners?
Yes, you do your thing.
All right. I move to approve SP 5484 with the following condition, that the owner provide an updated site plan to county staff with the only change being identifying eighty-four parking spaces.
I'll second that.
Do we need to add the "and" combined with...
"and," hang on, am I gonna get in trouble if I just add?
Yeah, I think you can modify that just by adding.
Okay, and it would also be contingent on the lots in question being combined.
I'll second that also.
Do I have a second? Oh, we have a second, excuse me. All right. All in favor? Mr. Edgy? Commissioner Edgy?
I vote in favor of the motion.
Thank you. All right, it is unanimous. All right, next, next on our agenda is Indigo Ventures, SP 5494, and Mr. Carey is here for the county.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself from this.
Yes.
All right. Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you tonight, we have a site plan for a new office building and lay-down yard at eleven twenty Airport Industrial Drive. The proposed building is seven thousand two hundred square feet. Here is the site. Here is the site plan. The applicant is showing interparcel connectivity to parcel to the rear. And shows a detention pond and related infrastructure. Staff recommends approval as presented, and Pete Shonauer is here to represent the applicant.
Any questions of Mr. Carey?
I'm glad Neil left because he'll laugh at me. What exactly does a lay-down yard entail?
So, that would be a place to park your equipment. You could have materials as well.
So, it could be any of that. It could be gravel, dirt, vehicles, any of that sort of...
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, is there someone here to represent?
Hello, everybody, I'm Pete Shonauer, Tidewater Engineering. Trying to answer any questions you have and also request your approval for the site plan.
Thank you. Have any questions of Mr. Shonauer?
No questions.
Commissioners? Thank you. Okay, this is a public comment period. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak against this project, please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on behalf of this project? Please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission. Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I offer the motion that we approve SP 5494 as presented.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, we have, and Mr. Edgy?
I vote in favor of the motion.
Thank you. So, we are unanimous with one abstain. Thank you. All right, and the next item on our agenda is Highway ninety-nine Mini Storage, SP 5494.
Good evening, Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you have a, tonight we have a site plan for two new mini storage buildings with a total of twenty-five thousand eight hundred square feet and associated infrastructure.
I see, up top we have fifty-four ninety-four, but it's actually fifty-four ninety-six.
That is correct. Five-four-nine-six.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Here is the site. And here is the site plan. Again, similar to the other project, staff is recommending that site plan be contingent on getting the lots combined as there's a historic lot line going through the shorter of the two buildings. That is all from staff.
Okay. And so who do we have here? Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Carey before we move forward with...
I just have one quick question. What is this in relation to the development where the Coastal Pines Golf Course used to be?
So, this is up the street from it. This is closer to the railroad tracks, but it is adjacent to that area in some respect. It's up the street.
Right, just up railroad tracks, it's quite a distance from Coastal Pines Golf Course.
Right.
It's two miles or better, maybe three, maybe three miles.
Yeah, it's almost right across from the new Tanglewood or...
Okay.
That development over there.
That's down the street to me. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, do we have someone here to speak on behalf of this project?
Yes, we have Mr. Kyle Allen here.
Good evening, I'm Kyle Allen, Valen Construction Development. We're here tonight seeking site plan approval. I've got my engineer with me, Brandon Purcell.
Brandon Purcell, a maverick engineer, will be happy to answer any questions to go.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I've got one question, and it has to do with some of the numbers you've got on here. It's building properties slash site plan or site data. Had the site acreage is three oh five, three point oh five, and the development acreage is three point two five, which is two tenths greater than the site.
Just developing a little bit in the right of way, just concluding the survey acreage.
Okay, I was thinking that might be it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is also part of a public comment period. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak against this project? Please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak on behalf of this project? Please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission. Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to approve SP 5496 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, did you have something you wanted to say? Okay, all right. All in favor? Mr. Edgy, what is your vote?
I vote in favor of the motion.
Thank you. So, it is unanimous. Thank you. All right, we're going back to the first item on, the first, it's not the first item, it's the last item on our agenda. This is the Villas at Golden Isles Plan Development. And... Mr. Carey, are you here for this?
No, ma'am.
You're no ma'am? Okay.
Mr. Carey?
Ms. Lee for the county, thank you.
Quickly pass that one off. All right, thank you. This is EM fifty-four forty-nine Villas at Golden Isles, and this was deferred at the applicant's request from the June MPC meeting to tonight's meeting. And the main reason for the request was to allow more time for the applicant and the homeowners association to work together on an agreement regarding the private roadway and common areas. As of today, my understanding is that there has not been an agreement reached that's to the satisfaction of all parties, but both the applicant as well as the HOA has representation here, and they can talk more about where they're at with that. And I'll turn it over to them to update you if you'd like.
Okay.
And so, Mr., I know Joey Hires is here as the owner, and I believe we have representation from D.R. Horton as well.
Okay, good, thank you. Please come forward and introduce yourselves.
Hello, Commission, I'm Tim Stone, I'm representing D.R. Horton today.
Yes.
And I'm Joey Hires.
And I'm Morgan Agarine, also with D.R. Horton.
Okay.
Thank you for having us.
So, as the staff said, we have not reached an agreement. However, previous, at the previous meeting, we discussed terms loosely and how we agreed, D.R. Horton agreed to all the COA's terms. During the period of the last month, we've gotten those terms drafted into a legal document, and then last Friday, that document was sent to the COA for review. Given the holiday and kind of timeframe, that was about as fast as we could move. I had some questions outstanding with the staff for some of the items that I wanted to get answers on before presenting a document to the COA. But as far as material changes between us and the COA, nothing has changed. But as far as material changes between us and the COA, nothing has changed, other than we have a document in their hands for review.
Does anyone have a question of Mr. Stone before he hides in the background? Mr. Hires, if not, Mr. Hires?
Okay, thank you, Board, for allowing me to be back here to speak. I didn't give much history on what's been going on out in the Villas at last time, and I thought it was... Would be appropriate to do so tonight. And I have lots of information from two previous buyers here that I won't go through all of it, I want to hit some high points on it. The first thing that I would like to address is a little history of my experience with the COA President, his advisor, Joe Scagion, and it's been hell. I'll just put it to you just plainly, it's been hell for over two years now. Roughly two years ago, I had a buyer named Brent Lucas, his attorney was Lee Carmichael from right here in Glen County. So there is proof of what I'm explaining to y'all. He agreed to build identical units out there with no exceptions. Keep in mind, no exceptions. He also agreed to pay $140,000 that Brent and his advisor was asking for for the use of the roads. So that wasn't enough with them trying to extort $140,000 of us out of roads that already have access to through my deed. And after all was agreed on with the COA, they still would not sign anything and begin requesting more, like finish the tennis courts. And we want to oversee the construction, the gate at the front, the front entrance. So buyer number one, after months of trying to work with them, gets frustrated and leaves all his investment and walks. And his investment was substantial. And what I learned through this process was it's not about design out there, it's not about anything but control, and I'm gonna give you a lot more information on that. I want to read what Mr. Lucas sent to me yesterday concerning his experience out there. I'll make sure I got the right one, because I got one from buyer number two as well. He says, "Please let this email and its attachments," and there's many attachments, "serve as our experience with the VGI COA and their tactics to prevent us all from moving forward with purchase and sales agreements for your property. And I want the residents to understand that on this purchase, the buildings were identical, there were no changes. They talked about changing to Hardy Board, but then they went back and said, 'No, we'll just do Stucco.'" They was trying to do everything they could to accommodate. It says here, "We spent tens of thousands of dollars in travel and professional services to ensure the project was feasible as well as marketable. We agreed to every COA demand, only for them to change when time to sign an agreement." They point blank tried to exploit us and derail our efforts to coexist and benefit off each other. You will also see in attachment several contracts from regional, local, and national builders where we had property sold at a substantial profit. Again, the COA's malicious attempts and efforts to prevent us from exercising our land rights and their efforts to exploit made us realize that the deal was no longer worth our time and energy. It's the most amateur, unorganized, dysfunctional organization I have ever had the displeasure of working with." And he also went on to say, and he called me not long before I come in here because he was furious to know that I was still fighting this battle. He said, "I hope this email helps in your cause to exercise your rights as a landowner to convey the property for the intended use. I will be happy to assist in any way I can. Furthermore, I've contacted litigation attorney to sue the COA for losses which are substantial." He gave me a number, and I'll leave that for he and his attorney. But I want to go on with some notes that I had wrote down here. Now, I hire my own lawyer to look at the deed. He determines quickly that I have all rights to roads and other common areas. My attorney is Stephen Blackerby from right here in Glen County. And he says here in his letter right here that I have, he says, "I am writing to follow up on our recent conversations concerning the Villas at Golden Isles and the potential development of your lots that are adjacent to the condominiums. As we have discussed, your lots have never been annexed into the Villas at Golden Isles condominium, and the Condominium Association is demanding that you pay a significant annexation fee as a precondition to adding your lots to the condominium." Now, we never said we wanted to add condominium lots. However, based on my review of the property records, it is my belief that you do not need to add your lots to the condominium in order to develop them. Further, it is my belief that you or any subsequent owners of your lots would have the right to use existing streets within the development, even if your lots are not added to the condominium. And he goes on to say, "The Georgia Supreme Court has held when property is subdivided and conveyance is made according to a recorded plat, the purchaser acquires an easement in area set aside for the purchaser's use. An easement created in this matter is an easement to express grant, and its usual purpose is ingress or egress, goods and versed forward." And then it goes on a little further in another Georgia Supreme case, and it says, "It is well established that when a subdivision contains an attraction such as a park or lake which renders the lots more desirable, the sale of the lot in reference to a plat showing the attraction will create an irrevocable easement in such an area for the lot owners." That's Henley versus Overstreet. And this goes on to prove that they was trying to exploit us, extort us, whatever you want to call it, for money. And it's funny that later on, I learned from a lady out there that I had not long met that was out walking her dog and run up with some guy out there, and I know his name, she told me his name, but told this lady that, "We're just trying to get money out of Joey. That's what we're trying to do, we're trying to get money out of Joey." So the COA then gets four different attorneys trying to prove what my deed says is wrong and wastes $20,000 of the COA's money.
Mr. Hires, turn back this way. Thank you.
But I'm still trying to work with them by putting the law... Putting in the lawsuit that I won, that whoever the buyer is will have to share cost of maintaining pool and roads to prove I am... Do these things. And also to take it a step further, when I won this lawsuit and everything was, I thought hunky dory, and we was fixing to move on with buyer number two, and everything was good, the President asked me, "What lawyer would you use?" So I told him, "I would use Stephen Blackerby, he done me a good job. Maybe y'all can work something out with... By using him." So my lawyer that won the lawsuit and proved that my deed was correct and that I had access to my property, went over to help them to try to work something out with buyer number two. But not all this other stuff on their wish list. That has not been done for over 15 years under their leadership. We just want to finish the development and share cost of roads and amenities. You know, it's amazing to me, this back and forth that's gone on through now, I'm in the third buyer that's interested in developing this property. When I put this in the lawsuit for... To be fair with them, where there wouldn't be no problems when the new developer come in there and built this thing out and created new taxpayers for our county and done all those things, it's... D.R. Horton will have 55% of the buildings out there, the COA will have 45%. How hard is that math? It costs X amount of dollars to do the... To keep the pool up and whatever repairs come up on the roads, then they split it 55, 45. It's just not... It's just not complicated to me, but it's been complicated, and it all boils down to one thing, control. Let's control this property out here, it's been laying out here vacant for 15 years. We like being able to walk our dogs on it or do whatever. So here we are, 15 years later, no tennis courts finished, the dated pool house that I'm fixing to mention in here, that I have a letter to confirm something on that. All these things, all of a sudden, they got this shopping cart with Joey and developers' money, and they gonna go around and see how much they can get. But I'm gonna go on now. Now comes buyer number two, Crawford Creek Communities. They are willing to work with the COA, build identical units with the exception of they wanted to use Hardy Board specifically over the Stucco. They didn't say that, they wanted to do that. Talking with the COA President, that didn't seem to be a problem. And they spent thousands of dollars on surveys for the units, and these units are very complicated out there, if you haven't never seen them. But they was trying to get each one of those units surveyed in there so they could be fee simple lots. They wanted fee simple lots so... Because banks cater to fee simple lots better than they do condos. But anyway, the back and forth was a stalling on every level. Also during this process, the COA decides after all those years that they want to dedicate the water line to joint water and sewer, and that's laid out there all these years, it ain't been no problem. All of a sudden, when I get a developer in there, they want to dedicate the water line to joint water and sewer, so they throw another block in there. Another little control thing that they want to do, they want to control us, they want to run us off is what they want to do. I'm not running too easy anymore. Crawford Creek also promised to remodel the pool house and finish the tennis courts. That has been there for all those years with them doing nothing on it, but all of a sudden, like I said, here comes the shopping cart. Then I got word that one of them said, "Well, I said that a while ago," so I'm gonna skip that and go on and say, "So after many failed attempts to get this project going, COA will not cooperate with the buyer. Buyer number two says they cannot deal with them anymore. It is my belief that none of the residents out there has been told that we had two buyers, two buyers that wanted to build identical to what they have out there, two buyers that met every... Every one of their demands. Every one of them, I got documentation here, and I got more in the truck, and one of the former potential buyers said he's got hundreds of emails." So if I was in a court and I was talking to a jury right now, I'm fully convinced I could convince the jury that it's never been about the design of the building, but it's always been about controlling my property. And what they want with my property, which they had the opportunity to buy it before I did, they knew it was for sale before I did. But now they've done everything in the world to hinder this piece of property from being developed. And I'll go on. If you don't believe that they're just trying to control this thing for their own selfish purposes, a few months back, Publix contacted me and said that they was interested in building on the corner and found out I owned the land adjacent to it. And I said, "Yes, I do, and Publix would be great out here, that sounds good." They didn't call me because I owned the land, they called me because they wanted a budget number for the development cost. So we began to do that, we get them budget numbers and all that, and they called me back and they said, "Hey, what do you think about a cart path to go over into the Villas?" "Hey, it's a great idea, I think the residents would love it." But I told them to contact Brent Stennerberger with the COA. They contacted him, they contacted me back, he said, "Ma'am, we can't get no answers, back and to, back and to, we don't know what to do." Same thing, no decision, stalled, never given a definitive answer. So really, they didn't want to own the property I bought, but they want to stop it from being finished, they want to control it. So now, we're at buyer number three. D.R. Horton is now wanting to finish this development. It's a new era, cost are up, the design that is there no longer matches the market. Building material is up 20 to 30%. If the first buyer had have got it, it could have been built at a lot lower cost, which would have made that design maybe work better for the community. But I'll give you a forensics about the condo situation. There's a condo that's been for sale out there since September 2022 for $275,000 and still hasn't sold. So what I'm told is lending don't really like condos, they prefer fee simple lots. That's what D.R. Horton's wanting to do. They wanting to change to townhomes and get things rolling out there. Also concerning D.R. Horton, they sell thousands of homes a year to many satisfied customers, and they have what it takes to finish the project. Unlike some others that I've been involved with, it gets to the point that the Villas did back in 2009, and it stalled out and never got finished. You ain't got to worry about it, about D.R. Horton, they gonna do exactly what they've been set out to do, they gonna finish the community. And also, I don't think the residents of the Villas have ever been inclined to understand that now this project, it was always designed for 90 more homes, they get to share the cost. Maybe their fees and dues or whatever you call it don't go up, maybe they come down, or at least they stay the same, because now they got somebody sharing the cost of the upkeep of the place. So that's a good thing that maybe nobody's thought about. My mouth's so dry. Mr. Boeckert, could I have a drink of your Coke?
Absolutely.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. I can't hardly... But I go back to the design changes that have worked in many other communities will work here. It don't have to be the identical same thing to make it work. They're all over the place like this, there's unfinished communities, and Stephen Blackerby alluded to that in some of his stuff that he had given me. COAs and HOAs are partnered in many different places. It could be a lovely thing out there for the residents if they wasn't getting deceived about it. And again, it's never been about design, because we had two builders that wanted to build it identical to what's out there. It's always been about control. That's what it's about, control, control, control. We want to control that guy's property that put his blood and sweat into and bought. We want all the control of it.
Okay, Mr. Hires?
I'm sorry.
It's okay. What are you asking us to do?
I'm asking y'all, here, I'm to it, I'm to my last point right here.
Okay.
On behalf of D.R. Horton and myself, I'm asking you allow the changes necessary to move forward with this project.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Hires?
I do, Mr. Hires. I actually have several things that I would just like to get more information on.
Okay.
You said that your piece of property that you own, that you're trying to sell to D.R. Horton, in that whole subdivision, you would have 55% of the buildings there, and the existing COA would have 45%.
That's correct.
Well, anybody with common sense could figure out how you could cost share back.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm not a mathematician, I could figure that out very easy.
I agree.
And it could be done legally very easy.
Very easy.
The second thing I would like to ask is, the footprint of your property, is it any way associated? Do you pay any COA dues for your property today?
Absolutely not.
Okay. That's a very important part, okay? You know, I personally don't have any problem with COAs or any kind of homeowners organizations until they go outside of their footprint, okay? If you want to dictate to your people that live in your community how many cars they can have, how many boats they can have, how many whatsoever, you can very well do it as long as it's in the footprint of your community. But when you start going out of your community, in my opinion, you're overstepping, okay? Now, your piece of property is already zoned for what? Ms. Leaf?
Yeah, we have the slide that shows the breakdown. So here's the current permitted uses, on the left and the right is the permitted uses with the amendments.
Okay.
So single family, succeeding.
Could Mr. Hires, in his current zoning, build single family homes on that property if he wanted to?
Yes, he can.
Okay. So there's a multitude of different things he could do?
Correct.
Okay, that I'm sure, I'm confident with great experience in these situations and these homeowners associations, that they would be a... these, um, homeowners associations, that they would be opposed to that also. No matter, pretty much no matter what he wants to do, they would be opposed to it because it, just like Mr. Hires says, it comes down to them controlling and them having the authority or just, just to dictate what happens next to them. So, I, I, I just don't understand why this, this is as complicated as it is.
You will get a chance to respond when he, when they finish, when they finish talking to Mr. Hires.
So, so Mr. Hires, I will tell you, I sympathize with you, sir. Um, we go through some of, I, I could write you a book on the stuff that we go through as developers and builders, um, dealing with HOAs. And, um, I, I certainly hope that we get some satisfaction for you here tonight. And I'm only one vote, but I can just tell you, I haven't heard the other side yet, but I can tell you that, um, I certainly hope you get what you're looking for.
If y'all need any form of information, if y'all need a recess to look at some of the things that they had, they had, uh, proposed to my other two buyers?
No, sir, no, sir, we, we don't, we don't need that.
You would be appalled if you saw.
Thank you. Uh, you, you have any more questions?
No, ma'am, I don't. Thank you so much for my time.
I have a question and, and, uh, I don't know if Mr. Hires can answer it or Stephanie can, I just want to make sure, I think we got a little bogged down on this last time, and I just want clarity, I think, and this is, um, so if, if Mr. Hires or whoever he sells property to today or tomorrow or whenever, you know, is going to build six-unit multifamily attached condominiums, is there anything in the documents that require that those condominiums be part of the existing condominium association?
I, I don't believe so, um, that's not typically something that we would have in the county plan development text because it is a private matter, um, but I'll defer to the county attorney if there's anything additional on that.
I'll just note that the plan development text, uh, you know, serves, uh, or stands as, you know, the zoning ordinance, um, in, in, in this case, as you know, a typical plan development text. And, uh, my read of it, which I read it this afternoon, um, I saw nothing requiring annexation to the existing condo association, um, but I don't have it in front of me right this minute.
Okay. And then does the existing PD text have specific parking requirements, no matter what's built, whether it's the single family, the six-unit condominiums, or the split into six separate single family lots, does it dictate the amount of parking?
I believe the ref- I, I'll double check the PD text I do have in the, the stack report, but I believe the reference was to, um, the exist- you know, to the county code for parking, I don't think there was anything either more restrictive or less restrictive, um, in the PD text, but I can double check that.
Could I, could I comment anything else?
Yes.
About the parking?
Uh.
It got brought up at the last meeting about the parking, the, the design that D.R. Horton has has a much better parking arrangement than is in those six-flex buildings out there now. Keep in mind, I own three of those condos out there, I own one of each design. The one my kids occupied while they were going to Coastal College here, uh, was in the very back. If they had any friends over and the people in the middle unit had to leave, they would have to go tell them to move because they was trapped. So the, the parking arrangement for the new design would be much better than the parking arrangements that's out there now.
Okay.
M- m- Mr. Hires, I have one more question for you, sir, and the gentleman that represents D.R. Horton, I'd like for his response to this question also. Do either one of your gentlemen's intentions of, i- i- is either one of your intentions of taking advantage or not paying your fair share of the associated cost with the COA?
Uh, no, sir, Mr. Boatright, so far, D.R. Horton has agreed to every term that COA has.
And that is in your legal document that you sent to them on Friday?
That's correct.
Mr. Boatright, I would like to add to what he just said, too, through this process, uh, today's the first time I've really got angry about it, I actually got angry about it after the last meeting, and then you read that stuff just, just, just being sent to y'all for y'all to read, and it angers me even more because some stuff just don't come with understanding. I've did every, did, I've done everything I could for over two years to work with this bunch. I did everything imaginable, I've never been rude, I've always been kind, I even recommended my lawyer to them to use, I put in the verbiage when I won the lawsuit, uh, to make sure they was protected. D.R. Horton has to do that because I have that verbiage in my deed. If it's, if that case that was, that was won to prove that I have these rights to access to my land, if, if, if they, if D.R. Horton decided they wouldn't go pay their share, they, they, they would lose the case against that. They're protected, they're, they're absolutely protected, and I did that because I have friends out there. I don't want anything to go wrong out there. I have dear friends out there.
Okay, Mr., Mr. Hires.
I'm sorry. The last question I have for you, Mr. Hires, do you have legal documented access from SPUR twenty-five to your property?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Absolutely.
So the answer to that is yes?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
It's in my deed.
Okay.
Any other?
No, sir.
Thank you.
I had a quick question, um, you talked about the agreement for the homeowners association, and that is, I guess, is it pretty much the same or very similar to what you presented last time? Because it seemed like a, a pretty good, I mean, fixing tennis courts and...
That's right, all that language is still in there, um, obviously it has a lot of attorney language in there, I'm not an attorney, uh, myself, um, and I don't, either it's the COA who drafted the initial agreement, um, that we agreed to in principle. So we took that agreement, that was the framework of what we drafted and provide to them, it's in their hands for review. But there are no material changes to that agreement.
Okay. Sounds like a win-win.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions? Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, this is a public comment period, uh, and, uh, so, I mean, it's actually, excuse me, it's a public hearing. And, uh, so I would, uh, ask if there is anyone in the group who would like to speak in opposition, uh, and I would encourage you, if you have a spokesperson, that you might, there, there's a lot of you here, if you have a spokesperson, if you might allow a spokesperson to speak on behalf of all of you, that's certainly up to you.
Are you going, are you going to give DTI Villas of Golden Isles an actual opportunity or are we speaking in opposition to them?
You are...
Did you sit here and you called me up to speak on behalf of Villas of Golden Isles? I'm Brent Stellberger, I'm the president, so...
Yeah, we are, we are in the, we're in the public hearing portion of it. The, the, what we typically do is, is what, what we did, that, that one got a little out of hand the last time, we are not going to do that this time, you're going to follow the, we're going to follow the public hearing portion of this, and so, uh, I would ask that if, if someone wants to speak, uh, against this, please come forward, state your name, address, address the commission, uh, we're, we're going to follow this policy because we already, we've already been through this one time. And you, and you're the spokesperson for the group?
I'm Brent Stellberger, I'm the president of the Villas Development.
Okay, and you're the spokesperson for the group, right? Okay, so that means that you have thirty minutes to speak.
I had a much different presentation for you this evening. I, I'm not, this, I had not expected the attack from Mr. Hires, I, I will tell you that most of what he said is wrong, I have emails, I have documents, I can prove that what he said is wrong. I feel he has slandered me, he slandered the owners with what he has said, he has lied to us and he's lying to you.
Okay, we're not, we're not going to make personal attacks.
What just happened from Mr. Hires?
Mr. Hires, we're not going to make personal attacks.
Okay, all right, all right, let's back up. When the Villas of Golden Isles was incorporated, two thousand and five, two thousand and six, there were, my, I'm sorry, my mouth's really dry, um, there were eleven buildings initially completed. The developer came to the owners at their January meeting in two thousand and ten and said, uh, things are bad, I'm going to declare bankruptcy. There were two buildings in process, he said, I'm, I'm out of here, I'm leaving Dodge. May I get a drink, there's somebody up there?
Sure.
He is speaking on behalf of the group, is what I understood, is that not correct?
I'm speaking on behalf of the Villas of Golden Isles.
But you're, you're the spokesperson for the whole group?
I am, for the Villas of Golden Isles, I'm speaking on their behalf.
Yes, okay, because this gentleman was as- asking to speak too.
Okay, the Villas, that's better.
Just for the record, sir, I got it, I got you some more.
Oh, I appreciate it, I was, things were dry.
Yes.
You know, we've, uh, I just want to give you a bit of history. So in two thousand and ten, the Villas, the developer of the Villas at Golden Isles declares And not only does he declare bankruptcy, but he leaves the thirteen owners, the, the original lots there, he leaves them in debt. You know, developers typically put money into it so you get started with your reserves, he leaves them in debt. But, you know, that being told, or that being said, the, the owners managed to work their way through things, they started accumulating reserves. There were twenty-eight lots originally, thirteen of the lots were developed, that leaves fifteen lots were not incorporated or not annexed into the Villas. A quitclaim deed from Coastal Development who bought the property out of bankruptcy constantly turned that over to the association because the state of Georgia says you can't own the swimming pool and you can't own the common area, a private person can't own that, so you have to turn that over to the Villas up at Golden Isles. So that left the fifteen lots that Joey was talking about. Now that developer, I, I could have been prepared to discuss the whole thing, I didn't think we were going to go there. Coastal Development bought the lots out of bankruptcy, they met with a previous president, they negotiated for, I believe, about two to three years, looks like according to the records, and tried to work agreements out. But they could never work an agreement out because they didn't want to annex the lots in, and what they wanted to build just, it didn't make sense for the Villas. It, it just, all sorts of things involved, the water, who owns the water, who owns the sewer, whatever, so things don't work out. So Mr. Hires buys the lots in two thousand and nineteen. Now, we felt pretty good about that, he, as he had said, his, his children, he'd owned three lot, three units, and his children had lived there for a period of time, and I knew Joey and talked to him. And so we were excited about that because I'm the president as well as the treasurer, I know that we need the funding from those lots. So anybody that tells you we don't want to develop those lots and we want to control them is wrong, they're just wrong. The property was meant to be maintained by the income from twenty-eight lots. If you do the calculations, we've got two buildings that need roofs, we've got a pool that needs to be recoded, we've got road that's got cracks in it, at some point it's going to need to be repaved. With the situation right now with thirteen lots, the income, our, our, our income right now is two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars a year, that's long-term, that's not going to be enough. I mean, I've done the calculations, we, we need income. And I'll just, I'll go straight to the point, well, let me, let me say something else, I, I, I don't, I'm just, I'm in kind of a state of shock. Mr. Hires attended a meeting with us, I was just looking at this, in Oc- on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, a, a members' meeting. And he came to that meeting, and we had our attorney at the time there, and Mr. Hires promised us that he would annex those lots in, he was going to do the right thing, he was going to annex those lots in, and he was going to build our unit. And in fact, he asked us to go ahead and start the paperwork, I guess in two thousand and seventeen, the Georgia State Legislature changed the law, that used to be if you were working on a condominium association and it wasn't completed within seven years, you couldn't annex. Well, in two thousand and seventeen, according to NOAC Howard in Atlanta, they said, no, you can, that, that, they changed that. So Mr. Hires said, okay, well, we'll, we'll annex in. So we started the paperwork, we started working with NOAC Howard, now, now remember, we're talking about attorneys that are four hundred dollars an hour, but we figured, well, if we can get these fifteen lots annexed in and we can build uni- and we didn't say they had to be exactly by our units, they don't, they don't have to be exactly, they could be any, anything that fits and works, it's really not about what gets built. It, it's about how the two communities would get by, but anyway, so we go ahead and we authorized that, so we're spending, you know, we're working on that. A gentleman by the name of Gary Roberts, who, I've never met Gary, he's a realtor in South Carolina, he was negotiating with Brent Lucas and Browder McGill and Joey Hires. Now, we've got our people working on, uh, documents to annex them in, and we're negotiating, we're going back and forth, and I think we're, in fact, I've got a text from Stephen Blackerby at one point where he was looking over documents and said, yeah, change this, this, and this, and we're ready to go. That was in late February of twenty twenty-one. So, so the next thing we know, though, we're getting, I'd have to reveal all this and go, I just wasn't, I didn't come prepared to talk about this, but, but the idea that we're trying to control him and not get those lots is ludicrous. And if you want to talk about rights, we're a COA, we're a condominium owner association. I mean, that's what it is, you know, that, that's what it was incorporated as. So these people buy in there because they know what they're going to live in, they know the rules, they, they know the color of the building, they know that things are the way they are, they buy there because they know the yards are going to be maintained, the roof is going to be maintained. You know, it's a place you can go and live and you can travel and you don't have to maintain it. Mr. Hires owns fifteen lots smack dab in the middle of a condominium association. He knew these lots were in the, right in the middle of the condominium association, I mean, what are we supposed to do? Yes, he owns those lots, he has the right to develop them, we've never denied that, we've never denied him access to the lots, he's been in and modem, he's come and go as he wishes, surveyors have been all over our property, surveyed them, we didn't stop them, we never kept them out. It's in our advantage that he develops those lots, we want those lots developed, we need the income, I can't emphasize that enough. Now, it's true that we have owners, I've heard some of our owners say, well, let's don't let them in, we can't, we can't stop them, he's got access, he's got an implied easement to our property. Great, that's fine. You do have to keep in mind, an implied easement is not ownership. Mr. Hires does not own our roads. We own the roads and we maintain them, Mr. Hires just owns those fifteen lots, but great, that's fine, we're good with that. I, I don't go, I don't know where all the controls come in, we kept him out, and about the deal with his attorney? Publix, oh, Mr. Hires, Publix contacted Joey, like he said, and he gave him my name, I talked to a guy, Matt Griffith in Tampa. Matt said, we want to buy that lot on the corner and we need a small segment of your property because due to the state highway, we can't, we want to get two entrances on Highway ninety-nine, we don't have enough room on our property, we'd like to buy some, a little bit of land from you so that we could have two entrances and maybe have a way to back your property. Our people were excited, Publix? Our people were excited, Publix, and we'd have a back door to Publix? They were going to give us fifty thousand dollars for that little piece of land. And the deal fell through, is he nuts? We did a contract with them. We had an approved contract. We didn't have the fifty thousand yet, but we had an approved contract. Business conditions changed and they backed out. I got a retraction of the contract, okay, fine. I don't know where it's coming in that we wouldn't, we wouldn't work an agreement out, we thought Mr. Blackerby was a great attorney. So, so many of the things he said, I'm not, I'm not prepared to address all that, let me just, let me just say, we want those lots developed. But we're a condominium association, and we have rights too. If you look at the average owner, the average owner, if you were an original owner, you've paid almost fifty thousand dollars just in dues. I'm talking about the monthly dues, you can do the math, two hundred and twenty-five dollars times seventeen years, fifty thousand dollars just in dues. For the average person, ourself, with what we've, what that person has paid and the value of the unit, they've got about three hundred thousand dollars invested in that unit. That could be, for some folks, that may be half their net worth. So, we want to develop the lots, we want the income, he's right, we want that income. But we have rights as well, he just owns the lots. So, I got an agreement from Tim Friday afternoon, my wife and I were doing things, I looked on there, I saw that, I got an email. Now, we were promised that agreement, we, we first met with D.R. Horton back in December of last year. We had a meeting with Morgan and Sean Ware in January of this last year. I've got an email, I've got all my emails, I can, I can back all this up, I've got emails and phone calls, we went ahead and we documented all that. So, we heard from them February twenty-first and didn't hear a thing until we saw rezoning signs on our property. So, I don't want to hear any crap about, "We've been holding off or we haven't done anything." Now, when we saw that rezoning sign, we asked our members to start writing emails and letters. We're not trying to keep him out, we just want to make sure that it's compatible with us, that's all we want. I think we have that right. So, Mr. Stone sent us a preliminary agreement. First thing we've seen since February. We didn't have time to give it to an attorney, we didn't have time to meet with the members, we went ahead and sent it out to the members, because we wanted them to see what we had. Now, he, Joey says, "Control, control, control, we're trying to keep him out," that's nonsense. I, 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 I'm, I'm all confused here, but with Mr. Hires and Brent Lucas and Browder McGill, our understanding, Joey told me, they got into a fight and he got mad and the deal ended. With Crawford Creek, we were, I think, ninety percent of the way through, we had their documents, we were working with Mr. Bill Ligon on the documents, and we liked them. In fact, we pulled them out again the other day, we were looking at them. We're ready to go with those guys, man, they had a great cost-share agreement. You say a cost-share ought to be easy, it should be, it should be easy. Now, let's talk about D.R. Horton. Now, you understand, Joey just owns the lots, we own the condominium association, we own all that land around there, and we maintain it, our landscaping is eighty grand a year, just in landscaping. We've got fifty grand a year in insurance. Now, here is one paragraph from that cost-sharing agreement that Mr. Stone sent to us. Now, this is just one paragraph, oh, I've got two here, let's, let's look at them.
Is this, is this the one that you just got, is that, okay, thank you.
"The association shall not make any material changes," this is from them, "improvements, alterations, or modifications to the recreation area without prior written consent of the development parcel owner." That's the lots. Again, the VGI COA has legal title, they're telling us, I, I'm the president of the board, I would have to get written permission from the ninety owners before I could change a tread-bill machine. "In the event," this is called self-help, "in the event that the association has failed or refused to discharge its obligation with regard to the operation, management, maintenance, repair, or replacement of shared facilities, then development owner, the lots, HOA, may give the association written notice of its failure or refusal and of development parcels owner's right to provide operation, management, maintenance, repair, or replacement in its intent to exercise self-help." This is the authority of the people that own the lots to authorize repairs on, on the COA property. But it gets worse. Now, we haven't seen any HOA documents, and we aren't going to see, and we don't legally have to, we cannot control lots on the lots, we don't argue that. But what if the COA has rules that, uh, let's say, we want to have a pool party, and we say, you know, "If we want to be over there at three in the morning, then we don't have to follow your rules, we're going to do it." I don't know if we're going to do that, who knows? But if they do, we can't stop them. If I called the COA and I said, "Hey, Mr. President," or the HOA, I said, "Your people over having a pool, we don't allow that," well, we do. Folks, it's, uh, I, 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 I just wasn't prepared, I could have brought documentation to prove almost everything he said was wrong in terms of, in, in terms of us controlling this land. I, I, I don't even know where that comes from, I don't even know where to start. The biggest issue for us, let's, let's talk about cost agreement, you say, "Well, that ought to be easy." It is easy, it is easy. What I did, I sent them a copy of our budget, I said, "Look, here's our budget. If you look at all these items, you can determine which ones are shared items and which ones that are not shared." So, here's what we could do, if you guys want to build a single-family house, you want to build an office building, or whatever you want to build, you, first, you take care of your buildings, I'll split out the cost of our buildings, but you'll have to help us pay the common area, and you'll have to help us pay for the road, and you'll have, have to help us pay for the pool, because you have the same access that we do, Joey's right about that, he has the same access, but it, you have to be clear, it is just an easement. But because they have the same access, then they, they have to help us pay for that. And it's great, because it will, it'll reduce our fees, and it'll allow us to do some fantastic things out there. But I just want to emphasize, it's, we're not trying to control, we, we'd love to have Joey get those lots sold, we're, we're good with him making his money, I mean, that, that's great, we're, we're for that. I'm not sure why he's attacking us, we want to build them, we're not trying to keep them out. I, I'm sitting there in shocked disbelief at what I was hearing, I just wasn't prepared for that. I was prepared to say tonight that, you know, if we could get things worked out, great. But, I, I'm not even sure, you know, at this point, what to go, I mean, would we prefer they build our buildings? We would. And it's a cost-sharing agreement, i- if it's just math, it is easy. If it's just math, that's fine. But if you start throwing this kind of crap out, and you're going to tell us how to run our business, I mean, you ought to look at it, I could send it to you. There are, there are minefields all over that. But, even with that, we could, we can get legal counsel, and we can work through that. Would the best way to be, the best way to do it would be to just do math, as you say, we take our budget, we figure out cost share, and you build what you want to build, we'll, we'll work it out. I'm here tonight to tell you, we want to work with them, we want to get this built out. But the, our, our people have rights too, they've got a lot of money, they've been in there seventeen years. Mr. Hires has rights, but we have rights, he keeps saying, "We're not, we're not giving him his rights." We acknowledge his rights, there's no question, he has rights, but so do we. So, I, I'm, I'm confused by all his proof and stuff he's got, I can guarantee you, the vast majority of it was wrong. I guess that's all I, I have to say, do you have questions for me?
No, I'm chilling, would it be appropriate for me to ask a couple of questions?
Sure, absolutely.
Want to ask you the same exact question that I asked Mr. Hires and the D.R.?
D.R. Horton, thank you, the D.R. Horton representative. Today, do you have HOA or COA, let's say COA, jurisdiction over the footprint of Mr. Hires' property?
Not a snitch.
Okay, now, with that being said, you've came up to us and you've told us, basically, that y'all need money to, to, to continue to operate.
For the long-term growth.
Yes, sir.
Long-term growth.
Yes, sir. Now, it's just, it's just a business, um, it's just the way business works. The person that has the biggest majority of the income, or biggest majority of the revenues going out, usually has a bigger say than the people that does not in business. So, if you and I bought a house and you own sixty-five percent of the house, and I own, you know, my percentage of the house, the rest of it, um, if you said, "No, I didn't want that house painted green," it probably wouldn't be painted green. And, 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 listen, I was deeply involved with a homeowners' association, it was in a very similar situation that you folks are in, and it's terrible, and I have great sympathy for you folks. What happened to us as a nation and a community in two thousand and eight during the great Barack Obama years was awful, okay, I hope it never happens again. And it left a lot of people all over America in the same situation that your COA is in. And there's nothing we can do about it, it's over and done with now. And, um, I, I guess, I would just like to leave by saying, you, it, I, I, I think in this situation, if Mr. Hires and D.R. Horton are willing to cost share, they don't even have to do that, it's my understanding.
No, that's not true. That's not true, they have an implied easement. They have an implied easement to their lots, we did the lawsuit, the, the lawsuit. We have a consent agreement that was negotiated at a cost of about fifteen thousand dollars. So, Joey Hires has an implied consent to our property, there's no consideration involved in that? Well, there absolutely is, we have a consent agreement. Without a cost-share agreement, they have no access to the road. It's in the cost-share agreement, they got to pay for the road, they got to help pay for the road.
Well, the point I was trying to make, Mr. Schellenberger, correct?
Snell.
Snellemberger, I'm sorry, I wanted, I mean, I don't mean.
Snellemberger.
Didn't mean any disrespect, Mr. Schellenberger. Um, he's not paying anything now, is he? Is he paying you?
We've not made him pay anything.
Is he cost-sharing anything now?
No.
Okay, so if he never, if he never does anything with the property, you're never going to get anything from this situation.
That's fine, that, that's fine, look, that's fine. If he doesn't build anything, then we're not going to get anything, and life's the way it is, and we'll survive. I told you, I told you we'd like to get the additional money, because long-term, we want, we'd like to get the money. I don't know where you're headed with this, but he has the fifteen lots. We let, we allow him access, he can do whatever he wants. If he wants access to the amenity center, we must reach a cost-share agreement. Now, I don't care if he puts a hundred lots on there, and we have our seventy-eight, we own as condominium property that we own. They have no legal rights whatsoever to tell us how to manage our property, they don't own it. I mean, you understand the concept of a COA, right? It's owned by the owners, a condominium association. I'm not talking about the fifteen lots that Mr. Hires owns, whether he has, he's got fifteen lots. If he can stack two hundred units on those fifteen lots, more power to you. But he doesn't own, he can't tell us what to do on the rest of the property. It's not a matter of numbers, it's a matter of who owns the property.
Ma- Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, point of order, we are still in the, uh, public hearing, and before questions are asked, we really need to end that. Uh, I, I've got questions as well, so, uh, I just want to make this thing right and legal.
Thank you.
Is that it for me?
Yes, well, it's, it's for all of us, he's, he's, he's talking to all of us, thank you.
Where are you on time?
Where are we on time? We're not, we've got nine more minutes, we've got nine more minutes for, for someone to address. We, we have, we have nine minutes, so someone else may come and, come and, and speak.
I'm Robert Jones, I live at one twelve Villa Road. And I just want to bring the following points for the future, without looking at the past. There are some things about the past we could talk about, but we've spent too much time on it. First of all, this area was designed for use by condominiums with ample off-street parking. Six vi- uh, uh, four of the six residences have ample off-street parking, four parking spaces per residence. Two of them have ample parking space for about six automobiles, I live in one of them. And that includes the garage and the slab. The streets are only eighteen feet wide. It was designed to be a community where you don't park on the street. We don't know what kind of condominiums they're going to build, because they haven't told us, they haven't told you. Uh, everybody else who's come up here has presented drawings, specifications, what they're going to put on the land. To the best of my knowledge, D.R. Horton has presented nothing. You don't know what they're going to build on the land. But I can tell you a little bit about what they might build on the land. First of all, they're building closer to the borderlines of all these parcels than our units are. Radically closer, and that reduces the front yard and the backyard. In some cases, they're going so close to the back, uh, border, that it's going to get very close to the lagoons. The back of our lots, in many cases, slope downhill into a lagoon. And they're going to be building closer and closer to that portion, it's, it's just unsound building practice. They have stated that they're going to put six townhouses on a parcel intended for six condominiums, but in the application, if you read it very carefully, they are also asking for sixteen-foot-wide minimum lot. This would allow them to put ten condominium, of their, uh, units on one of our parcels rather than six. So, they're being deceptive about what's buried in this application. And they have a fairly new thing that they're publishing, of sixteen-foot-wide condominiums. I can't imagine why anybody would want to live in a sixteen-foot-wide condominium that could be up to about a hundred and thirty feet deep. But anyway, that's what it is. So, uh, I think that they are deceiving you with the nature of this thing, and we need to be careful. Read that, uh, very carefully. They've left, uh, in this demand, unlimited access to all the condominium elements that they have submitted to us, everything. Go anywhere on the property, every, every bit of, every square inch of the condominium is accessible to them, except their property is not accessible to us, not that we would want it, because they're building on every square inch of their parcel, just about. They did not provide, uh, their submittal to the board to us until the very last minute, not enabling us to be able to get prepared for the last meeting, and they've done exactly the same thing this time. So, we're always back on our heels, because of the way they, they do business with, with their people that they're doing business with. Um, they provide a number of clauses, we've talked about a couple of them already, that allow them to dictate what our COA does, where it does its banking, their access to our bank accounts, it goes on and on and on. Uh, uh, of an invasive nature of taking over and strong-arming, uh, the COA aside. And they've got an army of lawyers to do it. Brent has already talked about this business of doing work and then billing us for it. If agreement is not signed, that they have submitted, this, um, we have really no obligation under the consent agreement. consent agreement to allow them to build, uh, concrete slabs for sidewalks and driveways to access their property over our property, because as we know from the surveys, the edge of the road to the beginning of Joey's parcel is about 18 feet of land, all along the roadway, all around the roads, owned by the condominium and under which are the water and sewer lines. We don't have to let them pave over top of our water and sewer lines or our property. They can drive over if they want to, if no agreement is reached. An internet search that I did of, uh, Horton's legal woes reveals situations to me that are unbelievable, um, in, in terms of lawsuits, in terms of shoddy building. Uh, they, they leave a trail of, uh, wealthy lawyers behind them because of all the litigation that comes against them. The Better Business Bureau gives this outfit one star out of a possible four. You just about can't get any lower than that. This is a national situation with them. They've even made it onto a television show at one point in time years back. It's where they've done business for years. Um, we, uh, are faced with a situation where they're talking about moving in anyway, not becoming a part of the land, and that makes our road basically a public road. A lot of our people are elderly, some are single women. Uh, they came there with the idea of being more, feeling more secure in a gated community. That's what they signed up for. That's what they were guaranteed by the, the government of this county in the planning and zoning decisions that were made years ago. It was governed by contracts, and this is just jerking the rug out from under them. Uh, if you take a look at some of the paperwork that I have sent to the, uh, this committee, um, there's, there are depictions of how these streets might look, because all of these lots will then be divided front to back. Every condominium, if it has a garage, um, will have its own driveway. The, the, uh, I said condominium, every one of their residences, the driveway, the, the, the parcel, in many cases, line up. So you're gonna have all these driveways coming out. They are very close to the street because they're building closer to their property line. There's gonna be parking on the street. There's, there's no room in our streets for parking. They have demanded in their, uh, application, access to our parking lot at our amenity building, and they're doing that because there's not gonna be any parking on the street in where they are. I've sent an illustration of what a portion of, of the area might look like. Uh, in the, uh, map that they submitted and was displayed at the previous meeting, it would appear that, uh, they have the property in some places from the street to the property line of the condominium, but in reality, they don't. Their property stops short of the back line, and, uh, there's about 18 feet between the street and the, the front of their property. So, uh, what they presented on the wall at the last meeting was not the way it is, and I have sent along a, a display in an email to the committee that illustrates what, what it is. They're, they're asking for the rezoning of a broad swath of land, all of which they do not own, and, uh, I don't think they're entitled to do that. So all of these things are infringing on, uh, the rights of what people expected when they bought those condominiums. It's, it's, it's in a contract. It's gonna look like this. If somebody doesn't like, uh, have more people over their house, then, uh, then the property will hold for parking?
Sir, the eight minutes, the eight minutes are up, so you've had-
But they can go to an amenity building and use the parking lot.
You've had two, you've had two speakers speak on your behalf. Thank you. Uh, is there anyone in the audience who, so, so that ends the public, the public, excuse me, the public hearing portion for, uh, for, so, for opposition. Is there anyone who would like to come and speak on behalf of, of this, uh, this, or, this portion of the, of the, uh, approval of, uh, of, uh? No, there's no time left. Uh, I mean, yes, yes, there's 30 minutes time left on, on, for someone to come and speak on the behalf. Yes, ma'am?
In favor?
In favor. I'm, I'm sorry, yes, in favor. Is there anyone in, who would like to come to the podium and speak on behalf? Okay, uh, can you, can you make it up here? No, I'd, I'd rather you come to the, if, if you're okay. Certainly.
My name is Vivian Whitfield, and I live at the Villas. And I've been there as a real estate agent since it was being developed, way back from day one. And at that point, this property that Joey is trying to develop was included in what we are, have already developed. And it was, it was laid out for all the amenities, the pool and everything to accommodate this area. So that, to me, that's not an issue. But also, the plumbing, the sewer and everything was laid out at the same time. So I don't see why we can't get it together some way and go ahead and develop and get it together. But as far as the amenities center and all, it was, it was developed to take care of all of that. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come and speak, uh, in favor of this? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. The public, uh, hearing portion is closed. Oh. Commissioners, uh, Mr. Edgy, do you, Mr. Edgy, I see you on the screen. Do you have some questions you wanted to ask?
Uh, I, I do have some questions. I actually have questions for Mr. Hires and D.R. Horton representatives and Mr. Snellenberger. So, um, if you don't mind, I'd like to start with Mr. Hires. Uh, and, 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 Mr. Hires, I'll apologize to you. I can't see you, unfortunately, um, but I could tell you that I heard the frustration in your voice. And if just some of what you're saying is true, then I think your frustrations are well warranted. The way, the way that I see this, you are the short-term victim in this whole ordeal, because you've not been able to sell your property or develop your property, and at this point, you're the only loser in this thing. However, my concern hasn't changed from June when we spoke. And my worry is that if we approve this rezon request, and D.R. Horton pulls out like the other two potential buyers did, now this property is rezoned, and then in the future, God knows what goes in there, and then the COA residents become the long-term loser in this ordeal. So I, 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 I just wanted, I just wanted to acknowledge you and tell you that I heard your frustration. Uh, I, I'm, I'm not going to, for a second, believe that, that, uh, you know, 100% of what you said is, is actual, or, and I'm, let me take that back, is, is acceptable on, uh, the, the COA's, uh, behalf, but I hear your concern, and I hear your frustration, and I sympathize with you. I just, I think that you are under the same, oh, I'm trying, I'm at a loss for the word. Uh, we're all at the mercy of this potential buyer, doing what they say they're going to do. So I guess I'd ask you for a, a short response to that, and then I'd like to follow up with, uh, the D.R. Horton representatives.
Okay, Mr. Edgy, I, I appreciate that, and I appreciate your concerns about that, but, uh, I haven't engaged with anybody. Uh, the first two buyers that got frustrated and left, uh, they could tell you, uh, actually Brent Lucas is watching online right now. He's been commenting, commenting, commenting to me on the phone, uh, as the, uh, other speaker was speaking, and, uh, I could verify everything that I said to be the whole truth, nothing but the truth, and put my hand on the Bible, and I'm not scared to do that. Uh, I've tried to put things in place that would protect the Villas, like I had Stephen Blackerby do, on the participation of the road repairs, the road maintenance and amenities and the pool upkeep. That's in writing. That was, a judge signed off on that. There's no way to escape that. Uh, I, I have, I have never done, I have friends out there that I value a lot. I'm a very big part of this community now with, uh, with the biggest investment I've ever made in Glen County. I'm not here to make enemies. Uh, that, that's never been the case, and, and, uh, if I only had one friend out there and it's Ms. Vivian, it would be worth all my efforts just to protect her and her interests, because, uh, she was so good to my kids when they lived out there, and, and we love her very much. But, uh, I don't believe for one second, and that's just like, uh, how many complaints could you look up on Walmart if you, if you Googled, uh, the bad stuff on Walmart, but the people that's writing the complaint still go back out there and still buy stuff from Walmart? Same way with D.R. Horton. When you do this kind of volume of work that they do, they're gonna have issues. They're gonna have people that, that, the, the, the paint look like it changed from the color when they bought, or whatever, a crack come in their concrete, and anybody that knows concrete knows it's cracked, or whatever. The paving contractor like myself may have left a pothole. There's always gonna be complaints about everything. There's always gonna be situations. So I, I don't think any of the buyers that I've brought to the table is wanting to do anything to harm the Villas at Golden Isles. And I've personally, I've personally talked to Brent Snellenberger about that in, in earnest multiple times, that I didn't want anything to hurt the Villas at Golden Isles. Tim?
Sure. And I think, uh, if, if you have a separate question for me, that's fine, but just to speak a little bit about ourselves, um, I mean, D.R. Horton's been the number-one builder in America for like 16 years, so this COA doesn't have to worry about us going bankrupt.
Hey, hang on one second. Bill, did you want to ask him a question?
Well, no, I, I, and I, yes, Sherri, thank you for that. Um, I, I, I agree with Mr. Hires that, uh, you can look up reviews on any company, especially one the size of D.R. Horton, and find bad stuff. You're also gonna find some really good stuff. That, that, that's just based on the size of the company. And his, uh, comparison to Walmart was spot-on. Um, but what I do agree with Mr. Jones is, and, and, um, and I think, am I talking to Mr. Stone?
Mr. Stone, yes.
Okay, uh, I, what I do agree with Mr. Jones are, is, is that your late submittal of this proposed agreement has put the residents of the COA on their heels, to use Mr. Jones' word, and have not allowed them the proper time to prepare for this. Um, you didn't, I assume they have, um, covenants and restrictions that require, um, or, or, maybe it's not covenants restriction, but bylaws that require certain time of notification for a meeting, and I am sure that if it was Thursday or Friday of last week, that there was not the proper notification time for the residents of the COA to assemble, meet, and discuss this. Uh, so I guess I want to ask you, and, and I don't want to, I don't want to hear the excuse of the holiday, because I, I worked a short week too, and I got all my work done. Uh, why was the agreement not prepared like you said you were going to do in June, and why was it not sent until late last week?
So first off, I understand completely. I was not asking, uh, the COA to sign that agreement. Um, I sent that over to them to review. I didn't expect, um, an answer or response. I did reach out, um, to get some surface, just feelings on how it was, but, um, so I just want to throw it out there. Um, and I agree, the, the document they get that, get to them at a later date than I would have liked. Um, I would have liked to, the attorneys to move faster drafting as well. And we've spoke about cost-share agreements and how simple they are. They are. They are, you know, you, you take the cost of things, you break it down by percentage, it's simple. There are other things in this document that are more complicated, such as the COA's request to bond the infrastructure. That, that requires me seeking out answers from the staff. I had to reach out to the county engineer to see what that looks like. I had to reach out to, uh, bond brokerage companies to see if that's something they would honor, uh, bond to a private company. So there was work going on during the month. Um, it's not just as simple as having an attorney draft a letter, breaking out percentages. There are things I had to dig and dig for.
And I, I understand that, and I can appreciate that. My understanding, uh, in June, and maybe I was wrong for doing this, but my understanding in June was that there was at least some type of draft agreement already prepared, and my, my assumption, and you know what you do when you assume, my assumption was that that could be amended or, or revised and then presented. So if, if I'm wrong in that assumption, then, then I apologize for that.
That's mostly, that's mostly correct. There was a, a, the COA presented us with a two-page document of requests of things they would like to see in an agreement. Um, that two-page request, when you give it to an attorney, turned into a 20-page cost-share agreement. So at that time, there was a surface-level communication and agreement of what the COA wanted and what we would provide.
Okay. Um, I haven't read the, um, the agreement. Obviously, I haven't seen it. Uh, but based on what Mr. Snellenberger was saying, there was some extremely restrictive language in that, um, is there, is, none of us wants to extend this, this thing, this issue a- anymore. But is there any possibility to relax some of that restrictive language, even if there is a deadline put on the COA to, uh, to come up with recommendations for less restricted?
Sure. And just to explain some of the restrictions, um, I think, and I, honestly, this is, this is all private matter between us and the COA. So we're kind of doing negotiations in public right now in front of everybody. So some of that restrictive language is in place. So there's a cost-share agreement, right? So Joey's property would make up, I make up a percent, 55% of the neighborhood. So they would, they'd take on 55% of the cost of the amenity, the infrastructure, and so forth. Uh, I think the point that Mr. Brent brought up was about if they want to change something at the amenity, they'd have to provide the HOA with written notice, right? And as the owner, they don't like that, because they want to control their own property, which is understandable. Um, in this case, the written notice is in place because the HOA would be taking on 55% of that cost. So let's say the COA wanted to fill in the pool with cement. The HOA would pay for 55% of that, even though they wouldn't agree to it. So that's why that language is in place. Um, but, I mean, honestly, it, it's a negotiation. We sent it to them for review. We'd love to get comment. I, I didn't ask them to sign it. Um, I just want feedback, and we'll continue moving forward. My fear is if we continue to drag on this process on a rezoning, which isn't about a cost-share at all, um, that, that COA has no obligation to sign, as seen with the previous two owner, or potential buyers. So we would like to continue moving forward. I would like to continue working with the COA. So far, I've agreed to everything they've asked for. Um, I've done everything asked. We came with a, an agreement, a legal document, sent it to them for review. So we, we've stuck by our word so far, and I don't know what else I can do.
Okay. And, and that's ver- fair point, and I appreciate your candor. Uh, my last statements or questions, and Chair, uh, Madam Chair, thank you for indulging me here. Um, Mr. Hires, um, and this, this is for Mr. Snellenberger. Uh, Mr. Snellenberger, Mr. Hires said, "Dealing with your COA has been hell," quote-unquote. Um, he's had two potential buyers pull out. What is your assessment? And I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to take up a whole lot of time, but it, give me a Reader's Digest answer here. What is your assessment of why the other potential buyers pulled out? Uh, and, and does the COA accept any responsibility in those two bailouts?
Well, I don't know what he means by being held. We hear a comment, and then we go months or weeks or whatever, and then we don't hear a thing. a thing. And then we get a demand for something, which we respond to, and then we go a week, a month, two weeks. We were dealing with Brent Lucas and Browder McGill, and they backed out. We never met 'em. I talked to each one of them maybe once or twice over a period of a year on the telephone. We dealt mainly with Gary Roberts of South Carolina, realtor, was Mr. Hires' negotiator on that project. Our understanding is that they had a disagreement with Mr. Hires, and they backed out, and that was it. Mr. Hires subsequently brought Crawford Creek. They're a builder, I believe, out of Atlanta. I did meet with them for five minutes one time. They popped in to shake hands, and Michael Rosenberg was a nice guy. They did a nice application to the county. They copied me on everything. We were working with William Ligon on documents. I've still got the documents, just went over them last weekend. We liked the documents. They claimed no ownership whatsoever over the COA. It says in their HOA agreement, they have no ownership or control of the common elements, the pool, the improvements whatsoever. A cost share agreement does not have anything to do with who owns the property or who's in control of the property. If a person or an entity, if you buy, if you buy property in the middle of a condominium association, you have to realize you're gonna have to deal with the condominium association. If you don't wanna deal with the condominium association, go buy a hundred-acre field. Go build someplace virgin territory. But if you're gonna buy property in the middle of a condominium association, you gotta deal with the condominium association. It's not a matter of controlling and don't want this, don't want that. You're buying property in the middle of a condominium association. They have maintained that. We have a property that right now is insured for twenty-two million. I did multiple calculations over the weekend. Any way you look at it, the Villas is worth about twenty-five million dollars. Twenty-five million dollars. We're insured for twenty-two. Now, these folks are gonna come in here, they own fifteen lots. We're fifty-five point one eight five acres altogether. They own fifteen lots. I don't care if they build two hundred units. You can't come, you can't build those units in there on fifteen lots and control an estate worth twenty-five million dollars. I mean, these people have paid for that.
Right.
Over seventeen years, they've paid for that. We wanna work with them. We wanna get the money. We wanna get it built. But a cost share agreement has gotta be just mathematics. And yes, they're gonna have more units, but mathematics does not make them now the owner of a property.
No, you're right. You're right. And I appreciate your answer. And Chairman Gibbs, I appreciate you giving me a little leeway. I know that my questions were a little overstepping with regard to our authority here. I was, I'm still in my mind trying to determine my, how I'm gonna vote here. You all know, and I said this in June, you all know that nine times out of ten, I side with the developer because I believe in private property rights. I just believe that we are opening ourselves up for a huge potential for these COA residents to have issues if D.R. Horton pulls out of this and something else goes in there later. So forgive me for overstepping. I thank you for indulging me, and I thank you all for your answers.
Thank you.
Is there anything I can say else, Madam Chairman?
Well, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
And just statements and maybe some clarity for Mr. Edgy if I may be wrong. But one, you know, we are not, we have not been privy, I don't think, to exactly what the consent agreement says in terms of the cost sharing. But while Mr. Edgy was speaking, you know, really, I think, came to me. The issue, and the issue with the cost share agreement has nothing to do with why we're here tonight.
That's correct.
And that's, the same issue you have today is gonna exist whether or not we change what can be built on Mr. Hires' property. He, and anybody that, you know, look to staff and the county attorney to be wrong. Y'all can't make him join your condo association. You can't make him, you cannot make him participate in any way in the maintenance of y'all's residence or the insurance on them. You have a consent agreement signed by a judge that addresses the cost-sharing requirement. And I believe Mr. Hires and his future purchasers writes to the amenities. Not ownership of the amenities, but that. So to me, what's before us today is, do we think Mr. Hires should be able to change exactly what the PD text says he can build on his lots? Right? I mean, that's why we're here. That's it. I mean, we got a little bogged down last time, and I do feel Mr. Hires' pain in that he feels like the cost-share piece is being held over his head, I guess, for no better term, in regards to moving forward. And today's a different day. You know, there's lots of changes that have been made to PD texts since two thousand seven, eight, nine, you know, based on the realities of the world today. And so I feel like our job is our townhomes that maybe go beyond. And I guess that's a question I have for staff, too. When we make this change, if we make this change, Stephanie, and say that, you know, right now it says some different wording, but basically that they can have six townhomes on a lot, correct? And you're looking for a little bit more flexibility than six on a lot, correct? Or does it come out to six a lot?
So the way the PD text is currently written, the multifamily units have to be designed exactly like what's currently built out there. We're removing that language. I think we're proposing six-unit townhomes. It shows the minimum width being fifteen or sixteen feet. That's just for flexibility. I think our unit's twenty-four, twenty-five feet wide. It's just in case market changes.
Can you put that graph back up? Just 'cause I think it already, unless I'm reading the wrong side of the graph, let me just make sure I didn't, what they have now and what they're proposing. It's like the, had blue on the page if I else think. Okay. So six-unit multifamily attached, but then the PD text states that the six-unit buildings may be split and deeded into six separate single-family lots. That's townhomes.
That is. And then just the PD text is specific on that design. So that's really where they are looking to remove that specific design.
Designed to be able to build more.
Right. That they would be, yeah, all in a row instead of this. I mean, something that may, if the applicant is willing to do so, I mean, I don't know if it would bring comfort to some of the owners in the existing units, but I mean, keeping that current design in the PD text as a possible allowance. So it would be added in, in addition to what they're proposing. So if in case, you know, this developer, you know, doesn't go forward and purchase the property, perhaps a next developer down the road might be interested in doing that same design. I don't know if that would happen. It wouldn't guarantee, of course, that design would be done, but it would still be in there as an option, because right now it would be removed, basically, as an option, that particular design.
And I, I mean, I understand the townhome need. I mean, if y'all haven't gotten your insurance renewal this year for condominiums, get ready because it is a crisis situation in Georgia right now to get condo association policies rewritten. And I mean, it just, bankers don't wanna insure them under the most favorable terms, and insurance is, yeah. So, but I mean, that's the reality of the marketplace. Otherwise, Mr. Hires is going to have vacant property next to y'all, I would imagine, for a long time. So to me, the question is, you know, is, does this body feel like the change to the PD text is warrantable? And it sounds like you have a cost-share requirement that has to happen for them to have access to the pool. Is that, I mean, correct?
Can I speak here again?
Yeah, if you have something about the cost-share agreement.
I do. I just wanted to go to the person that he referred to a while ago on the last buyer that I had before, D.R. Horton, and said, "We tried in earnest to reach some form of mutually beneficial agreement, but ultimately, we decided that it was not worth it, continuing to pursue as we were deeply concerned that the COA could hinder our progress once we got construction underway." Now, I skipped the part.
Wait, hang on. Just, I thought you were gonna read what the cost-share agreement consent order.
They couldn't never get it.
No, no, no. I mean that you signed, that the court signed that says you would enter a cost-share agreement.
Well, they have that. I'm sure y'all have that in your paperwork, and I mean, that's part of the deed now.
So do you have to, I think to this gentleman's point, do you have to reach a cost-share agreement on everything?
No.
To have roads, entrance, all of that, or is it on the pool?
Roads and amenities, that's it. The cost of the pool upkeep, the pool house, and the roads, road maintenance. Okay, I'll look it up. I got it.
There's a cost-share agreement. The cost-share agreement covers everything. Now, he has an implied easement to the property.
Right.
I don't think our attorney did a very good job. I think our attorney should've said, "Yes, you have an implied easement, but you don't have unrestricted access without paying, without paying for anything." So the only thing we could get was, he had to pay for the road, and if he wanted access to the amenity center and the pool and the improvements, then we had to work out a cost-share agreement. And at that point, we wanted to get the lawsuit settled, and we did. But if you're familiar with real estate law, or if you, where I used to work, I did easements. Easements are not effective usually unless you give compensation. You get a driveway easement, you gotta pay for the driveway. You gotta help pay for the driveway. If you have an easement to a property, you have to help maintain and pay for the property. You can't expect seventy-eight owners to maintain a property worth twenty-two million dollars and you have free access. You come and go as you wish. You fish in the ponds when you want. So the consent agreement says that in order for them to have access to the amenity center, the swimming pool, the tennis court when it's finished, they have to reach, they have to reach a cost agreement. But our, you know, from real estate law, if somebody's gonna have access to the fifty-five acres and it's gotta be maintained, now they're gonna have part of that as their lots, and they're gonna have to maintain those lots because they own those. And as Bob said, we have no say on those lots. We have no say, and we don't print it, we don't pretend to. And we're, okay, that's fine. That's fine. But you have to have cost agreements. Is it fair for the seventy-eight owners to maintain the forty acres or so of common area and mow it and maintain it and plant trees and bushes and flowers? There's gotta be, there's gotta be cost sharing. They're not there now, so there's no cost sharing because they don't exist.
Uh, sir. So I think you just have that same problem, though, regardless on what we decide tonight, right?
I think, yeah, this, this right now, yeah, you rezon or, you know, whatever, don't rezon, yeah, that stays. I'm just trying to make sure we're clear on the cost. The consent agreement just settled the lawsuit. It was to, okay, let's just end this and go.
I got one, one comment, if you're finished.
Yep.
Sir, again, I have great sympathy for you folks. I really do, because I've been involved in a very similar situation to this before. And I can tell you, I'll just give you some advice of what's gonna happen to your COA if you're not very, very careful. You're gonna end up in Superior Court, and your COA is gonna go bankrupt with legal fees. I'll just give you a brief example.
Why do you think that? I'm really curious why you think that.
Yeah, let's not give legal.
Let's not go into that. We're not.
No, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, but I've seen it happen before.
How, what do we need to watch?
Well, I'll let your lawyer explain to you. I'm just, I.
You mean in regard to the lots?
Yes, sir. I'm talking about just in general, because ultimately, Mr. Hires has the right to do what he wants to with his property if he's not inside of your COA. And it's been, everybody's word told me tonight, he is not in your COA.
He has a right to build what he wants, yeah.
Yes, sir.
We don't, we don't argue that.
Okay.
So how would that bankrupt us?
With just a lawyer, just in legal fees.
Why would there be lawyers?
Just in legal fees, because if it ends up in Superior Court.
For what?
For.
What would be, what would be the disagreement? We're not arguing, he, he can build single-family homes, he can build townhomes, he could build a twenty apart, twenty-story building if he wants. We're not trying to stop that. We're not arguing that. That's not our point. We're not trying to control the lots. All we're saying is, is that if he, if he builds, we have a consent agreement that if he, if he builds a unit and they want access to the amenity center, we have to reach a cost agreement. That's all we're saying.
And he has a legal.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, Mr. Snellenberger, you're a hundred percent right. Unfortunately, our body doesn't have the authority to talk or even use that as part of our judgment on this. We're based, we are facing a rezoning request, and regardless of whether there's a cost agreement in place, we have to make a decision on that rezoning request. And nothing that has been presented tonight, and none of the discussions that you and I have had, and none of the emails that we've, and God, how many was it? At least thirty emails? None of them addressed anything that is associated with the rezon. It's all about cost sharing or this and that and the other. That's beyond our purview. So we are here to talk about rezoning, and that's what we're gonna vote on tonight. I'm sympathetic to you. I hope it gets worked out. Unfortunately, that's out of our control.
That statement is not true. You have not read all your emails, because they are addressed in emails that I have sent to the board.
Sir, you've had your time. Thank you. Commissioners.
And Madam Chair, if I can point out something, I know it's late, but there is something additional in the PD text that the county attorney and I were talking about. If we could pull up the presentation again. There's some language that's, that was from the original PD that no longer applies to the development. It talks about public dedication of the streets, and that's not, you know, as we are well aware, it's all private roadways. So I just put a slide in the picture. It's on page, in the PD, in the PDF that is part of the packet. It's on page eighty-three of the ninety-three-page PDF. There's just, were no page numbers, so I couldn't refer to that. But this, the first line is what we're recommending stays in all applicable requirements of the Glen County subdivision regulations shall be followed in the development of these parcels. And the remainder of it refers back to, to one planning commission, refers to when planning commissions review Platts, and also public dedication of infrastructure. So none of that is applicable anymore. So we just wanted to bring that up as an additional, additional change if this were to move forward. Thank you.
Okay. One of, one of the things I would like to say before we go any further is, I'm in agreement that we're not here to work out your deal between, between D.R. Horton and, and Mr. Hires and the association. We're only here to determine if we move forward with this. And it will really be between D.R. Horton and Mr. Hires and you guys to, to work out all of, all of this stuff that really has to do with, with cost sharing. Commissioners.
You ready for a motion?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept ZM 5449 as presented.
Stephanie, you have that up there?
Yeah.
The way it's supposed to be, let's make sure we have it correct.
I'll second that. Talk about it some more.
We have a motion to second.
You do wanna talk?
Well, I don't know if.
We have a motion.
We've had some that haven't talked.
No, just to say a comment, it was all.
No, I was just gonna say, a comment was all in. This is just a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. This is not approval of this rezoning. It has to go to the Board of Commissioners before it is actually put in place. And that will also possibly allow some time for additional talk as far as cost sharing, et cetera, with that.
And, and the, the other thing I would want to say too, before, before we, we go any further is that anything about what's going forward, once it goes from here to, to the Board of Commissioners and whatever decision they make, anything that has to do with layout and plan and that kind of stuff, it's still got to come back to, it still has to come back as, as site plan approval. So it's, there's, there's a lot of checks and balances here.
Yeah, although, I think one of the gentlemen said, you know, they didn't have to, they haven't done any of that, that's the next step. So they still have to get site plan approval before they get building permits. Correct, Stephanie?
Yeah, just to clarify, if they're gonna be, if they, if they won't be fee simple lots, if it would be a rental product, then that would be site plan approval as a multifamily project. But if they do the fee simple separate lots, then it'd be a preliminary plat, and final plat, which is, which is administrative, except final plat does go to the Board of Commissioners for final approval.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second.
I was, I was just gonna say, I was, I've been real torn about this all day. And I was actually making notes while everybody was talking about, just trying to, trying to simplify this, because we were so deep in the weeds. And I, and I think, I think we have done that. I think, I think if we just boil it down to what we're here for tonight, I, I think that simplifies it and makes complete sense. And I, actually, I was, I was originally leaning the other way, but I think, I think the way it is now, simplifying and boiling everything down, we're just here to change a PD text. And I think that's, you know, I, I feel better about that, and I, and I can support that. And, and where it goes from here, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done, but that, that's out of our hands. I mean, we're not, we're not here for that, so...
And Madam Chair, I would have to agree. I think this simplifies for us.
Okay, so we have a motion in second. Commissioners, how do you wanna vote? All in favor? And I see Mr. Edgy. Mr. Edgy, tell us what your vote is.
I voted in favor of the motion.
All right. It is, it is unanimous, and it's approved. Thank you. So I have a motion to dismiss?
Yeah, motion to dismiss.